Michael Kirschman, Director of Parks and Recreation, happy to be here. What we're going to do today is give you a brief overview of the study we completed back in September of 2020 on the feasibility of an eighth recreation center in Virginia Beach in the Centerville area. So just a quick recap, we actually started with a rather in-depth study on a modernization study for the four older centers. We hired HBA Architecture and Moody Nolan, phenomenal team from across the country, to work on this study. And then we added to that scope of work, a separate study on the feasibility of an eighth rec center. I will say that, I think the moment I walked in the door three and a half years ago, my first week here, I actually heard from members of the community, and this was prior to even being on the council, Councilman Woodin, people were saying, well, hey, what about this talk about a Centerville rec center? Up until then, it had been nothing but talk, a lot of talk. And so we said, well, let's get something on paper and let's have the architects and the consultants look into, what would that look like? So the feasibility looked at, is there demand? What's the demand analysis for a potential eighth center? What could be some possible levels of service and some of the core amenities that would go on such a center? We looked at where it could go, and we looked at how much it would cost, just to get these questions answered. And if you recall, the consultants were here, oh, that was about a year and a half ago, and we gave this brief overview back then. So, real quick, when you're looking at market analysis, we do a random household survey. We go out to the public every year, do a statistically valid household survey to the 95% confidence level, and we're always asking the public, what do you need? What do you want? Recreational trends change, and it's good to stay on top of that with our data. And so, one thing I can say is, the residents of Virginia Beach love our recreation centers and the recreation center system we have. And that's due to decades of support from the public and our elected officials. And so you will see that, when we ask the public, you know, what do you have a need for, recreation centers rank number one. So we already have seven, but they're still saying they need more. And you can see the other amenities that fall within the recreation centers, where those fall out on the demand analysis. Another question they ask is, not only what do you have a need for, but how important to you is that need? So they rank the level of intensity of need. We combine the number of people that want an amenity or need an amenity with how bad they want it, you get what's called the priority investment rankings. And they merge those two metrics together to come up with high priority, medium priority, and lower priority amenities that, if funded at some point by the city, basically they're saying, this is where you have the biggest bang for the buck. The most people served, and they really, really need these things. You will see, just like any surveys across the country, nothing trumps paved biking trails. Trails are always the number one amenity that the public wants across the community. But you will see, closely followed by trails here in Virginia Beach, recreation centers, again, rank very high. So we do know that there is demand out there. When we pull the demographics for the Centerville area versus the other seven recreation centers, what you're looking at here is, based on number of households around a potential eighth rec center, it is in all likelihood that a potential eighth rec center would probably be our third busiest. And that is based on convenience. So when you have lots of households around the center, that tends to draw visitation. Nothing trumps convenience. Yes, some people might go before work or after work, but really, when you have households, rooftops, around rec centers, and you have higher density, you have higher visitation, and hence, higher efficiency to those facilities. You can see Kempsville is our number one facility in terms of usage. Kempsville trumps all the other rec centers in terms of just demand. And we do know, we strongly suspect, that if a Centerville rec center was ever built, it would take demand off Kempsville. Our number one complaint at Kempsville is, I come, I can't get on a piece of equipment, the classes are full, I can't get in the pool, the lanes are all filled. So it's just, again, a lot of use due to density and number of people live around there. So what you're looking at there is a demographic analysis, I won't go into the detail, but you can see where Centerville falls out in terms of total population, households, that would be within a three-mile radius of a future center. Comparing it to the other seven centers in the city. So the next thing we looked at was, where could such a center went? We only looked at parcels of land controlled by Parks and Recreation. We started with every piece of parcel owned in that area. Could it fit enough acreage? What's there already? Does it make sense? We narrowed those 28 sites down to five. We worked with our consultant. We even looked at sites across the line in the Chesapeake. So during this process, we looked at all types of partnership opportunities. We engaged Regent University and talked to them about a potential university-public partnership. We engaged the City of Chesapeake on a public-public partnership, either on our side of the line or their side of the line, and then we looked at our parcels. And you can see where we looked at all the different sites and the preferred sites. The top five sites can all fit such a building, and the preferred site, based on demographics, where it would likely have the most success in terms of visitation, people coming, you know, when you build an expensive facility, you want it getting used. We believe that that would be Site A. That is the current site of the Charleston Athletic Complex. What could go in this facility? Well, we would have all of our core amenities. You'd have a fitness area, you'd have an aquatic amenity, elevated walking track, you would have your gymnasium, of course, childcare, all of our core amenities. And then we looked at, really, five different options on what an eighth center could be. In general, I'm just going to lay this out for you. Option number one is a rec center akin to Williams Farm. So what I'd call a standard rec center. Very nice, has a gymnasium, has a pool, has a fitness center, has multipurpose rooms, has childcare. Option number two is a Williams Farm-type rec center with a joint library branch within the building as well. So, in the library's vision document, we're looking with them for if and when we ever build new, to start consolidating services under the same roof. Shared parking, shared common spaces, shared bathrooms, higher efficiencies, all that kind of good stuff. And then you can drop your kid off for a program and go read a book, or you can be in your class, and you can be, you know, you can be, a lot of good synergy between those two. And I know the public libraries, they have this in their vision plan as well, both for if we ever build a future one in the C-TAC area or in the Centerville area. So that's what Building Two option is. Building Three is the same as Building Two, only adding to it what's called a Big Mac. And this is a different type of court facility. We don't have any MAC courts in our rec centers currently. Building Four is all of that plus a 50-meter pool. We have no 50-meter pools in our system right now. And then, option number five is same as Four, but take off the library, if that makes sense. So again, different square footage for each. The consultant calculates all that out, what's it going to cost to build each one of those, what's it going to cost to run each one of those, and we look at all five of those scenarios. Just so, again, we'd have an ideal on what would this thing cost, and what are the options that are out there. So that's an example of a MAC court, just in case you weren't familiar with a MAC court. It's got a different surface, you can do indoor soccer, indoor lacrosse, all kinds of different activities. Again, we don't have any of those. If we ever do any future rec center or rec center expansion, I would certainly recommend consideration of a MAC court along with a bamboo spring-loaded court like at Kempsville, so you can do all different types of activities. Very common, just about any new center I'm seeing built around the country, will have a MAC court as well as a standard gymnasium, especially at the colleges and high schools, or colleges and universities. This is going a little past what I thought here with my clicking. So you can see some, the consultant drew up how this could look, so we could do some site fits on the different parcels of land and how big they are. You can see on the left, where they, kind of getting a feel for how big the building is, if you add the library, if you add the MAC court, if you want to take those off. To the right is what the second floor would look like, similar to our newer rec centers with an elevated walking track, and some of many of these upstairs as well. And if you add the 50-meter pole, again, how big does this get, and can this fit on the parcels of land we're looking at? So here is an aerial image of Charleston Athletic Complex. Right now, this is a home of the Charleston Athletics Association. So if this site was ever utilized for a different purpose, such as a rec center, these facilities would need moved. So you would need to add that cost to the construction cost of a rec center, you got to build them their facility somewhere else. And we do have sites for that, although I should say, we have not engaged them at all. They might be listening to this right now for the first time. So they're probably like, what are you talking? But it's not happening today, it's not happening tomorrow. This would just be the key site for a rec center. Again, just look at it, look at all the households around it. You do have a neighborhood connection to the south, you have all the apartments across the street, high density, frontage on the main street, good access, everything you want in a regional facility such as a recreation center. And there's just one of the test fits. So we just did some test modeling, would it fit on the site with parking, with stormwater, all that kind of good stuff? We believe it could fit. Out of the five options, staff's preferred option is Option Three, if something like this were ever to happen. And there's various reasons for that, happy to explain that in more detail if needed. So here are your, what would this cost? In $20, $20, a straight Williams Farm-type rec center, it's going to cost you almost $40 million, $37 million. Option Two, with a public library, if you're going to add on about a seven, I think we did 17,000 square feet for a library branch, is going to get you about the $40, $45, $46 million. Option Three, you add the MAC, you're in the low 50s, and then from there, for a 50-meter pole, $70 million, back down to $61, if you take out the library. So there's your ballpark numbers on what it would cost from a capital to do this, excluding, if it goes at the Charleston Athletic Complex someday, excluding moving that facility to a new site. So tack on a couple more million on top of that. Now, I will say this, one of the sites that the Charleston Athletic Complex could go to in the future would be the current site of our maintenance facility, which is currently getting moved with ARPA funding and getting relocated to the Damneck Site. So that site would become available. With that being said, then it is, what would it cost to run the facility? In general, you're looking at $5 million per year, in general, depending on the options and how big it is and what's in there. But that is excluding, that's excluding revenue. So, for the sake of argument, let's say the rec center brings in $1 to $2 million in revenue, you would take that off the operating costs. With me is Chad Morris, and if we have any questions, happy to answer those. So the operating costs are anywhere from $2.5 to $5 million, but that does not include revenue earned. So if the rec center is going to bring in, in general, $1 million to $2 million in revenue, it would be anywhere from $1.5 to $3 million in net cost to the city to operate, which is in line with standard rec centers.
Mr. Tower.
Thank you. My question about the Charleston Lakes, is there, is that property leased to an association or anything?
No.
We own and operate it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Ross.
And those three port, was it delivered in 2020 to the city?
Mm-hmm.
So we've been had it for a year? This is the first we're seeing?
This was one of the, this was one of the very first presentations, I think, after COVID hit. We were at the convention center, and the consultants came and did the presentation.
Long presentation.
It was.
The reason I'm asking, because 2020 cost information is like asking about gas in 1960.
True. Good point.
You've really got to be adding a significant escalation factor to that, at least, I'd say 15% would be being kind. So I just think that. And the other thing I can't remember, because a lot of things have changed relative to energy prices, Olympic pool, sized pools, which is what you just referred to, 50-meter pool, energy costs for those things are huge. And I know we have some basis for our current energy, plus energy projections are not going negative, they're going up in real terms. So what kind of escalation clause did they use in their model-to-model energy cost, which the pool ends up being the biggest expense, both maintenance and energy consumption and chemicals of all the things in the facilities?
Yep.
I know we've closed a number of pools and sold HOAs just because of those costs. So how did that factor, what portion of those costs are most?
So I have the numbers on that. I will say that a subconsultant on this team was Councilman Hunzaker, the number-one aquatics consulting firm in the country. So they would have developed the cost per square foot to build it, the cost per square foot to operate it, which would have been incorporated into these numbers. Now, again, those would have been at, to your point, 2020 numbers, but I'm sure they're included in the overall estimates. And if we ever did do an eighth rec center, we'd probably want to consider a design build. We'd figure out what the cost, what size we're going to build, what we're going to do. To your point, the costs are going to be different than what's up there, based on the market these days.
Well, I just think when people see a number, you know, and then they think that's what it costs, but in reality, no one ever reads the fine print, it's $20, $20. And then when they, we ran into this when we were out there talking about the bond referendum, you know, how much did we escalate the price, all these things, because people want to think, hey, you told me it costs this, but when I actually get it and open the door, it cost me that.
Right.
And I'm just trying to make sure that we, that we are very good disclosure, that these do not reflect market price.
And there wouldn't need to be an escalator, because quite honestly, if you dropped in front of me right now $45 million to go build this, it would not go under construction for two or three years. So you'd have to add an escalator from the time you start the project to when you actually go out to bid for the construction, because it takes about two years for design.
About 30% higher than the number of three.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gucci.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman, I appreciate the presentation. Just as a point of clarification, was the, I recall receiving a briefing about this from the consultant about a year ago, we were at the convention center. Is this effectively another form of the same presentation?
This was the exact information, we brought it down to seven slides, and we're redoing it right now.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I know the conversation is ongoing, but I just wanted to clarify, there's no new information in this report, it's just a continuation of the conversation we've had about feasibility and desirability of a Centerville rec center, correct? And my other question is related to, just to speak, just to be direct, are you recommending that the city consider developing a Centerville rec center? Are you sharing the information about feasibility? Is it a policy recommendation from your office that the city would create a Centerville rec center?
I would say this, we have many needs in Parks and Recreation. How we prioritize those funds, I leave to the city manager and leave the city council to decide. We have a VB trail that I would recommend being funded. We have a Centerville rec center concept, I'd recommend funding. We've deferred maintenance in our parks, we've undeveloped park sites. And so, there are certainly a lot of needs out there from just a recreational, public recreational standpoint, but I really don't want to get into prioritizing those against each other.
We are in it, though. We are in it, and that's what I wanted to try to bring to the surface today. Because, I mean, I think that there is a very strong case made here for desirability of a Centerville rec center, but I also want to present that in the context of the existing needs throughout our city. Could you talk a little bit about the deferred maintenance on the parks and playgrounds?
Sure. So, interestingly enough, as we did this visioning study for the rec centers two years ago, we are currently with a consultant doing a 10-year visioning study on the parks. So this laid out the modernization of the four older centers and a potential A center, said, here's the future of what could be for the recreation center system. On the park side of things, we know we have issues. We have over 40 park sites that are completely undeveloped. Some of these park parcels were acquired over 20 years ago, neighborhoods waiting for their parks to be built, don't even have a playground on them. We have about 80 other park sites that only have a playground, but no other recreational amenities. And then we know we have about a $30 million backlog in deferred maintenance, so assets that have outlived their lifespan, that really need replaced or repaired, you know, cracked tennis courts and playgrounds over 15 years old. The good news is, when it comes to the parks deferred maintenance, this body just approved about $15 million in ARPA funds to tackle deferred maintenance. And that's going to take more than just a bite, that's going to take a chunk out of that apple. It's really going to hit about 40 to 50% of our deferred maintenance backlog. That's incredible. It does mean, though, that there's still 40 to 50% of ugly, what I call ugly, still out there of existing assets that need replaced, let alone new parks, new neighborhood parks, new community parks, new regional parks, potential new rec centers, and as well, trails, which rank very highly, the VB trail. So those are the, that's the status of the parks, though, and kind of the needs that are out there.
Thank you. I do have a few other questions, and then I'll, don't want to monopolize the time here today. Do you, could you describe, in just a brief detail, some of the staffing challenges that you've experienced in Parks and Rec? Because, and also, your understanding about when, as a nation, we could expect to recover from those shortages, because, and how that may impact adding an additional facility? And again, I'm not asking these questions with any particular prejudice, but I am asking them because I think we need to consider the full context of the scope of the impact of a discussion like this. And then I may have one other follow-up to that, but I think that's a really important, because as you know, we've, you know better than anyone, we've had to close some after-school care facilities.
Not yet.
Oh, okay, well.
We're hopeful. So I can answer your first question, on what are our current challenges? I can't answer the second question on when it's going to change, although certainly, we are making strides. So, like all the city departments and private sector, we are facing some fairly significant staffing challenges right now. It's really impacting us, I'm going to take the full-time out of the picture for right now, even though it is impacting us in many areas on our full-time side of things, especially groundskeepers and landscaping and parks maintenance. But when it comes to our part-time, we're really getting hit in our athletics area, lifeguards, and childcare. I mean, those are just three of our many areas where we're hundreds of positions down. As you know, we've had to scale back our childcare operations, all due to staffing challenges. We did notify parents at 14 school sites that they would be losing their childcare at their school sites effective January 3rd unless staffing levels improve. I want to give a huge shout-out to the manager, Duhany, who authorized higher pay rates for our childcare positions. We advertised those a week ago, and within one week with 124 applications, we offered 33 jobs last week, in the first week of interviewing. To put that in perspective, prior to the new pay rates, we were getting about 10 applications every two weeks. And of those 10, three or four might be qualified, one or two might get hired, and you might have one person start. That wasn't even keeping up with normal churn, burn, turnover of the existing staff. To have 33 offers, we interviewed staff, we're interviewing every meeting room all day Thursday and Friday last week, and have 33 offers, contingent offers made that day, pending background checks, is huge. We are cautiously optimistic, although I don't want to get the public's hopes up by telling them right now that your school will remain open on January 3rd, because I can't make that promise, but we are cautiously optimistic that the new pay rates are going to enable us to keep some, perhaps all of those schools open January 3rd, depending on how many people can actually start passing the background checks, when they can start onboard, and how soon we can get them out there, deployed to the sites. So that is helping other areas of operation. Our current rec centers are not open yet to pre-COVID hours of operation. We don't have the staff to stay open late. We don't have drop-in childcare, we don't have the fitness classes we used to have, and we are about to reduce pool hours at rec centers due to our lifeguard shortages.
Thank you. I just think, as a body and as a community, we need to go into these discussions eyes wide open about the existing challenges we have and how adding to the, adding to the capacity would affect those challenges. And finally, Mr. Kirschman, if I could just offer one, just editorial comment in matter of feedback, as a reflection not of you and your team, but just about the circumstances we find ourselves in, because I can speak to two requests that I've had recently that relate to Parks and Rec. The first being to establish a cricket field, cricket court, I don't know exactly what the correct terminology is, but that would enable our neighbors and residents to play cricket safely and fully enjoy the amenities that are available in our parks. And there were some concerns raised about all the things that we discussed here, staffing, site, and expense, and how it would impact operations, and not in a way that was prohibitive. And again, I want to clarify, I know that's not a reflection of your unwillingness to entertain the idea, it's a reflection of scarcity of resources. And I think the same could be said of the BMX discussion that we were having in the city that I'm hopeful for, and I want to thank you for being open to those conversations and for being a leader and helping to find a solution. But we're still looking at an expense that's sizable, but relative to a request like this would be very modest, that we haven't been able to parse through. And I do think that we need to be thoughtful about how to be responsive to some of those, what I might characterize as smaller requests that come up, at the same time as we consider the big requests. Because as a community, if we're not able to meet the smaller requests relative to creating a new structure, I think it may be construed by some to be problematic to be considering the big ones. All of that is to say, healthy lifestyle, recreation, these are all priorities, for I know everyone, especially me. And so it's just up to us to find a way to sort through that with the resources we have. And I thank Councilmember Woodin for bringing this to our attention again, and for entertaining just some questions I had about the project. Thank you.
I could say one thing, which is news to you and probably everybody here, I believe we have the cricket field programmed into the CIP.
FY '23.
FY '23. So we do plan to have that constructed at Salem Woods for that user group.
That's amazing news. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Ms. Allen?
Let one has one, too.
I'll go ahead, Paul.
Long before you were here, I remember that we had a rather in-depth presentation about the cost of operating our recreation centers. And it was pretty amazing what they cost to operate. And I think that was a very telling thing, if that could be updated, and how we're paying those costs, it seems to me that when we had the bond referendum that approved one of them.
Well, more than one, I think it was four.
Four, okay, in the late 80s. That money, after the bonds were retained, were paid, is now going to operate the rec centers.
Correct.
I think we have that source. And so we do have some sources, but that doesn't cover it, because what would have been the operating cost in the late 80s is nowhere close to what it is now, I'm sure. But I know you've got all that data, and I certainly don't expect you to even try to attempt to answer it today. But another source out there that's a real rub with me is the open space money. When we approved the open space plan in 2000, or whenever it was, we raised the meal tax 0.44% of 1% or something like that to buy the open space. And that's what you're looking at as being undeveloped to this point, a lot of parks.
Some of those, yeah.
Properties that we acquired for open space. And so, but we targeted that as a $50 million project, with $5 million of it that came from ARP, and you know, of course, we, but we spent all of that. And now we really don't have any open space program.
That's correct.
Which people are not happy when they find that out, because we get a lot of folks who say, well, the city ought to buy this property for open space. I know that you all need that money, but that money that was supposed to be meal tax money for open space is going for Parks and Recreation maintenance, I guess, at this point. So we've got all of these little other things that are out there, that I'm glad that we're looking at the total, because we really can't look at anything piecemeal, we have to look at the entire thing. But this open space thing is a real rub with me, because I know there's a continuous request from people for us to buy parcels that people can see, boy, that really should be open space. And if we look at that list of properties that we acquired with the open space money, we would say, oh my goodness, what if they had been developed? So I hope that's something that we'll keep in a part of all of this conversation, because it's.
Our current consultant that's doing the Parks Master Visioning Project is also looking at that, what makes sense in terms of future land acquisition, how much would it take? I will say that roughly 63, 64% of the public can walk to a park. And so that's called a 10-minute walk time. It's a national average that just about every city in the country has adopted in terms of a goal for Parks and Recreation, that you can walk or bike to a park or a trail, because all the social and health outcomes result when you have easy access. We're at about 63, 64%, but what that means is, roughly 34% of this public does not have a park within walking distance. And the question becomes, how can we, what is our mechanism in future in terms of looking at those gap areas, acquiring land, we don't have acquisition dollars right now, so that we can someday build a park close to every home? That is a challenge, and our consultants including that in our current study.
Thank you. Mr. Branch?
Thank you so much. This is for...
Thank you so much. This is for city manager. During the budget process, is each department going to come before us and lay out their priorities and needs? Or I was just intrigued by learning something today about the, the list of things that are in the backlog for parks and rec. But can you tell us how that's going to fold out for us?
So from the last budget guidance meeting that we presented to council, I think three weeks ago or a month ago, we asked for guidance on this specifically. And I think the direction that I got from the body was they want to go through the process where we have all the departments come and all the different CIP programs come and update the council, right? So that's the direction that we, the budget team is giving to all the departments to prepare a detailed presentation on your operations and needs and wants, in addition to the different CIP programs. So that's what I understood, was the quasi-direction given to me at that meeting a month ago.
That would be helpful for me. So thank you very much.
Mr. Moss?
Just two observations, one for the city manager, because all these things that require debt have to be seen in light of our overall debt strategy and our bonding limits and our criteria and our bond rating. So I think Mr. Blushy was right on target when he said holistic look, because in the end, as I've mentioned many times here in my discussions with Mr. Tower, our ability to borrow money is now our biggest constraint when we don't have the cash to pay for it. So we have to be careful about how we allocate debt against the things that generate revenue versus the things that generate expenses. And so, and plus, we have this big flood protection program, which will consume a large percentage of our discretionary borrowing capacity. And the other thing I always say about surveys, when you never tell people a price and they're just giving an answer, it's like asking a teenager something. When it's unconstrained by a choice, how much income are you willing to give up to buy what you want? The answer is not as informed as you think. And so in the end, we learned that during the bond referendum. I'm sure you people that were out there heard people very interested as much, okay, but how much does it cost? So I just think we always have to temper looking at surveys when people aren't presented with a bill. You know, how strong is the affinity between the want or the need and the wallet? So I just offer that as just an observation, given my recent experience out on the stump with the bond referendum.
So I have a request with forty undeveloped parks and eighty parks that don't have anything there, except maybe they're very limited to what they have. I know this is probably a lot of trouble, but we're going to a district system where each council member is going to have their own district. I would particularly like to see, and I think maybe some of my colleagues would like to find out, where those hundred and twenty parks are and where they are in each person's district.
The consultant is breaking those down by district. We will have that.
Yes, if we can, you know, get that so that we can know. And I know it's not official, but it very well may be.
Be close in the.
I think it's going to be close enough so that we can kind of know, you know, where these things are. So we know what the needs are in each person's district. So if we could possibly get that, I would really appreciate it.
And hold on a second. And Vice Mayor, are you talking about current districts or?
No.
Okay, understood.
The future ones that we think we're going to be getting.
You understand that?
Yes, and we're doing it on the current ones, because we don't have the maps, because that's what the consultant has. But if we get new maps, we'll be easily, we'll be easily able to update it.
I think that's going to happen.
Yeah, it's a touch base with Ken.
Fairly soon, and, I mean, so you don't have to do it today.
Yeah.
I think we're going to know something, something fairly soon. And I think the council member is going to want to.
We'll get that to the consultant, and we'll have the numbers crunched on the nude lines.
But I think this has been a really great discussion from everybody. Anybody else?
Yes, here please. Thank you so much, Mr. Kirschman. And I want to make sure we put the focus back in Centerville, because that's where we started, and we have to make sure that we're staying focused. This presentation was requested by myself, because when I talked to several council members on the phone during our last budget season and the previous budget season, questions were asked. Well, did we see the study? Can we have more information? So I wanted to reiterate, and some people have already said they did see it. So that's good, we're seeing it once again. But that's the purpose of reiterating the study. So thank you for bringing that information forward. And again, still focusing on Centerville, this request for the Centerville rec center precedes me. This was something that was a request by residents before I got here. This is their top priority when I got here. It's still a top priority. And I think what's been clear to me is that it hasn't been made a priority here in our budget process and in council. And so I would like to continue, because I, I do represent Centerville, and I do have to represent the needs of the people who live in my district. And I don't think this matter should be put on the back burner any longer. I think the good news is, we know how we address an eat a elephant, you do it piece by piece. And so the ask for this budget season is a small piece, it's five million, to get things started. Now, can I ask you a question in terms of this whole process in building, funding a rec center? How, what's the timeframe or time span? Is it, I don't know if it's three or four years or?
So different, different aspects of the project take different amounts of time, but in terms of design, so finalizing where it's going to go and what's going to go in there, doing the public engagement and getting at least the concept drawings, but not starting construction drawings, is a solid year, two years? I'll split the difference, year and a half, eighteen months.
And then after that, you have to, of course, break ground and do different things?
And you go off for construction drawings, that can be almost, almost a year. And then you would break ground the following year, and you're probably looking at an eighteen-month to two-year construction, two years. So you're looking at a five, you're looking at five years from, you know, go. And you can chunk that up. You can do two years and wait a little while. You can certainly wait a little while between concept before going to construction drawings. But I would say, once you go to construction drawings, you want to have the money to construct. You don't want to spend the money on construction drawings and not be able to build right after that.
Absolutely. And so in that period, up to five years, a lot of things is going, will change. The cost, construction, all of those things are going to change. We, I think we're smart enough to know that. You know, the cost for today will be different five years later. There, we may see an increase or a decrease in cost. We don't know. But what's clear to me is we do need to start somewhere. The good news is also that we can do big and small projects. We can do cricket. We can also address our parks, maintenance, we can do all those different things. We don't have to just focus and be narrow on one thing. We're a big city with big accomplishments, big ideas. We can do both. One of the other things I'd also like to add in terms of the community, this conversation has not gone out to the public, but that's something that after that five million dollars is entered into the budget, and as we're moving forward and proceeding, that conversation will go out to the public, because we need to know what you think, what your desire is, where you would like to see the rec center, because this is a collaborative effort. And we definitely want to include the public here. And so in terms of all these things, I just want to make sure that my colleagues keep an open mind. There has never been a budget season, and there will never be a budget season, where we don't have competing interests, where we don't have issues of flooding and maintenance, and all of those things are a given. We will always have those items to deal with, but I can say we always get through them. In all of the other districts, we always, no matter what the competing interest was, no matter what the challenge, no matter what the rate of inflation, no matter what the cost, we got a rec center built in each of those districts. This is nothing new. So I would say keep an open mind, let's move forward, let's have a plan. There is a plan in terms of how to fund the rec center. Certainly happy to provide the information to you. But again, we should definitely move forward, strategy, strategize, plan. We don't necessarily have to have the Big Mac, the biggest of the big. We don't necessarily have to have that. But we do need something for our residents in the city of Virginia Beach and the Centerville District. They've been asking and continue to ask for this recreation center. So thank you so much for your patience, colleagues. Thank you so much for your input. Keep an open mind, let's move forward. Thank you, Mr. Kirschman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. A great presentation.